All right, so I'd like to call the order, this meeting of the Groton Select Board. It is seven o'clock on Monday, December 10th, and we appreciate everyone tuning in, either live or through a recorded version. First off, as we typically do, we're going to have announcements and an agenda review, followed by public comment. We then have the Town Manager's Report, which tonight includes seven items. A review of our agenda schedule, discussion of a potential letter to state representatives on community preservation funding, discussion of a memorandum of agreement with Indian Hill Music, discussion of a proposed capital definition policy, an update from the Town Manager on sidewalk plowing, a discussion of and likely approval of annual license renewals, and then a discussion of our draft Select Board goals. Under "Other Business," we will have a discussion around retiree health insurance cost share and potential changes there. We have our typical ongoing issues listed here. We have an opportunity for liaison reports, and then we have three sets of minutes to review and potentially approve. So, first item is announcements. Does anyone on the board have announcements? Mark?
I just want to announce with the Christmas and New Year, New Year's Day being on Tuesday, Town Hall will be closing at 12:00 on Christmas Eve and 2:00 on New Year's Eve, which is Monday, the 24th, and Monday, the 31st.
Very good. I should also announce that Barry Pease is attending remotely. He is traveling, but he is here for comment and participation. Any other announcements? Public comments?
Drew would have an announcement on the fire hearing.
True. Mark, do you have the details for time?
Yeah, tomorrow night, 7:00 at the Centifire Station, beginning at 7:00 PM, the Fire Department Task Force will be holding a meeting for community input. They will be presenting what they have discovered thus far and what the facts are, and they'll be seeking public input to make their final recommendation to the board by January 14th.
Can I just add to that, for people who have not been to a meeting at the fire station, the entrance is on the right-hand side of the building on that wall, and there's plenty of parking back on that, on the right-hand side of the building.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for the reminder, Judy. Any other public comments?
Did Art?
Art, did you have, did you have, all right. We may be having technical difficulties.
Barry, can you hear us all right?
Everybody really saying it's really hard to hear anybody. It was really good at the beginning, then something changed.
How about now? Can you hear now?
Still seems like you guys are just kind of underway.
I don't know what happened.
Well, Mark will continue to look into that, and we will see what we can do. Why don't we, in the meantime, while he's looking into that, we have three sets of minutes that were included in our package. We can move those up before we go to the Town Manager's Report. Did everyone have a chance to review them, and did anyone have corrections, changes that they didn't let Don know about?
Hearing nothing, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the meeting, the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting on November 19th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Because Barry's participating remotely, all votes need to be roll call. All in favor?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguean, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Pease, aye.
Very good. The next set of minutes is the regularly scheduled meeting from November 26th.
I move we approve the minutes of November 26th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Roll call.
Pine, aye.
Deegan abstained.
Minoguean, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Pease, aye.
Very good. And the last set of minutes is the regularly scheduled meeting of December 3rd.
I move we approve the minutes of December 3rd, 2018, the regular meeting.
I will second that. Roll call vote, all in favor?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguean, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Pease, aye.
Very good. All right, thank you, guys, and we can now move back up to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Allison. Item number two in my report, Select Board Member Pine had provided the board with an editorial that appeared in the Boston Globe last week concerning funding for the Community Preservation Act. She requested that the board draft a letter to our state representatives, that would be both Representative Harrington and Senator-elect Kennedy, urging them to increase the state matching funds for the program. I've drafted the letter. It begins on page five of your report, and it basically takes information from what the town has done for previous reports, our previous years with the CPA, and we, you know, talk about what the editorial is calling for, greater funding. We ran this by the CPA for their review. Carolyn Perkins got back to me saying that they may send their own letter as well, but they appreciate the fact, she was very appreciative of the fact that the board is looking into additional funding on this. So if the board is okay with this letter, I'd ask you to authorize me to send it to both Representative Harrington, Senator-elect Kennedy. I will sign for Barry. Since Barry's not here, I'd like to get it in the mail tomorrow with the board's permission. So that was the first part of it. The second part of my report relative to this issue is, on the future agenda list that I had sent out to the board, one of the issues that you have on that list is whether or not to continue with the CPA. So my question to the board is, given the fact that we're sending a letter asking for more funding for the CPA, does that collide with the idea that we may want to consider not moving forward with it? So my question to the board is, do you want me to keep it on or not, on a future agenda? So that's the question, Allison.
Yeah.
Two questions, actually.
Okay.
A, approve the letter. B, what do you want me to do with that future agenda item?
Right. So I think it makes sense to talk a little bit about B first, and I was the one who requested that go on for discussion at least. The reality is, although this has been a fabulous program for us, that the state match is decreasing substantially, and where we are required to put specific amounts into specific categories, affordable housing, recreation, historic structures, we're not, and I don't, I don't think as a community that we're effectively utilizing all three of those. I have some questions about whether it makes sense to continue our commitment to the program. So I don't know where other folks are. Yeah, Josh?
I hear your concern, and certainly when we adopted the CPC or the CPA and then formed a Community Preservation Committee, we're getting more or less matching money at the beginning.
Right.
And it's eroded to the point where, I think, what is it, 19% now?
Yep.
That was the estimate for this year.
Yep. And I think it's projected for 11% next year.
While we have commitments for some of that money, in terms of Serendon Farms debt and other things, well, specifically, that debt's the one that's used year over year. Is that correct, Mark?
That's correct.
And that expires in 2021 to 2022. I certainly think that pulling out of the program prior to that wouldn't make sense. But in the event that sending the letter had an impact and the Registry of Deeds doubled their recording fee, it would put twice as much money into that pool, and if no additional towns were joining, instead of getting a 19% match, we could potentially get up to 38% match. So in so much as that's the case, that I think that considering removing us from the CPA and the SRTAC that's associated with that at this point is premature. So I would suggest removing it from the agenda for the time being, certainly revisiting it in a couple of years as we approach the horizon on the Serendon Farms debt and to see what happens with the Registry of Deeds program and the funding for it. So that's where I'm at. So send the letter and take it off the agenda, the answer to the question.
Yes, okay. Other folks? Yeah, Becky?
Yeah, I was totally astounded to see the suggestion to remove ourselves from this program because it has been used so successfully in Groton. So I think our efforts to prod the legislature to fund it more generously are the first step that we should take. You know, at some point down the road, maybe there would be a different way of continuing to collect the money locally and free it up for more use. I would, but I would really want to think carefully about that. I think the town is used to it at this point, and it has provided money for some really important projects in this town, and I would, my thought is, we definitely should continue with it at this point, and we should continue pushing for more funding at the state level.
Okay. Don, Barry, do you guys have input?
Go ahead, Barry.
Well, you know, I'm, I've got lots of opinions. I'm not sure that they're best given over the phone. I tend to, I tend to have a challenge as, I mean, right now, I mean, if you're getting 20% of turning your bets with this great money, right? You know, you could rather get 20 to nothing, but I fear that as we start looking ahead, we could not, we could not, we couldn't really do a Serendon Farm again, given the declining match, right? Effectively, it means that you're asking taxpayers to put aside to a fund with very limited matching dollars into a situation where that money can only be used for certain items. Additionally, if you, if you consider the fact that another project like Serendon Farm comes along and the town decides to throw a majority of the tax money, the CPA, you know, stipend or whatever you want to call it, earmarked for a project, and the matching dwindles, that ends up with a lot less money for other projects as for what the CPA was completely intended for. So I think that it might even be worth looking at what's the impact to exclude debt on Serendon Farm and how much savings that would give the taxpayer versus how much benefit we're getting. And maybe that's not today, maybe that's in a couple, in a year. Certainly, if we're going to get down to 11%, and you can understand it's going to decline if they don't make changes, I think that you do need to take a hard look at it. This is not the same program that the town entered into many times ago, and if things, decisions like that should be reevaluated. And if it is better to put taxpayer funds towards other projects and create our own, you know, CPA stipend, that might be better served rather than being beholden to the state's laws in order to get eight, five, six, seven, eight, 10% additional funds.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's some middle space there that could be looked at as we move down. Right now, we're doing 3%. My understanding is it could be 1% or 2% or 3%. So I'm pretty much supportive of, let's leave things alone until we get Serendon Farms paid off. But after that, we may want to look, not necessarily eliminating it, but perhaps reducing what percentage we're putting into it. So I'd just throw that out as something to add to the list of considerations. If I could just add one point else, on the point of putting the money in the various buckets, the open space bucket and the historic bucket get spent down every year, and those projects, projects come in all the time. Where we have a huge balance where money's not being spent is the affordable housing bucket, which now sits well over $400,000. It would be nice if there were some changes that allowed us to take some of that money to spend on other, other areas within the CPA, because that, that $400,000 is just sitting there with no use.
Yep.
So I take it the board is saying, send the letters and put this on the agenda a few years from now? Is that what I heard?
I certainly agree with the second part of that, and my intent was exactly to have this kind of conversation. For me, as an individual, in terms of this letter, I'm not in support of it, simply because this issue, while important to me, doesn't rise to the top of the state funding priorities in my book. So I'm not in support of this, but I would certainly take a motion to approve the letter or tweak it and send it.
What needs to be tweaked?
I don't know that anything does. I'm open to a motion regarding the letter.
I move that we authorize the Town Manager to send the letter as written to our state representative and our incoming state senator, as well as copying the Register of Deeds. I would send it to that individual as well.
That's a good idea. I like that. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, then roll call vote, all in favor of sending the letter?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguean, nay?
Geiger, aye.
Barry?
Pease, aye. Helps if I get off mute, sorry about that.
That's okay. Very good.
At last week's meeting, I presented the board with a proposed memorandum of agreement between the town and Indian Hill to resolve any outstanding issues relative to town fees required by the Indian Hill construction project. The board had some changes that they wanted in there, saying that the agreement is in effect until such time as the occupancy is issued, the special permit condition issued by the planning board to reconstruct the old Air Road Route 119 intersection should be included, police details required for the reconstruction of that intersection is the responsibility of Indian Hill. The administrative fee shall only be waived if it's waived for all other applicants, and then clause six to clarify the whole sign issue. I asked Town Council to address the issues immediately and get back to me with the revised agreement for the board's consideration. As part of the renegotiation, when Town Council reached out to Indian Hill last week, Indian Hill asked for clarification on the proposal to institute a ticket tax. They wanted that resolved as part of these negotiations. Town Council and I had a long conversation about all of this, and Indian Hill, with regard to the five issues that the board brought up, the only issue that Town Council had was the special permit condition issued by the planning board and the police details should not be part of this agreement since they were outside of the building permit application and really are not part of these negotiations. The other three issues, Indian Hill had no problem putting wording to that effect in the agreement. With regard to the ticket tax, that issue really is totally outside this agreement, and I don't think the board really should make it part of this agreement and shouldn't be part of any discussion right now relative to the building permit fee that we're negotiating with them. So I would ask the board at this time to, if you want to move forward with that, to invite in the representatives in Indian Hill to a future meeting, and just put that on the table to them right away, and it should be done outside of this issue. Because of that, I don't have a final agreement to bring to you this evening, because I didn't know how the board wanted to proceed. So I guess I'm looking to the board, do you agree with my statement on this, that the police details and the special permit of the planning board should not be part of this because it has nothing to do with the building permit, and that the ticket tax should be handled totally separately, and you should invite Indian Hill into a future meeting? That's my proposal to the board today.
Yeah, Becky?
Well, isn't the whole purpose of this memorandum of agreement to make sure that everyone understands how much money in any kind of fees Indian Hill has to pay to the town of Groton until they get their occupancy permit? So that saying that police details and, what was the other one, and the, and the planning board's special permit are separate from or independent of the building permit just sort of invites more misunderstanding. If, my understanding was, the memorandum of agreement is not just about the building permit fee, it's about all fees.
That have not already been assessed. So the special permit condition by the planning board is two years old?
Okay, but shouldn't, what's the problem with articulating in this agreement that that fee is still, we're not ignoring that, we still expect that to be paid, and that we expect police details to be paid?
I don't see a reason why it can or cannot be in there. I'm just telling you what Town Council indicated to me in his conversations with Indian Hill. If the board wants it in there, I will continue to push for it to be in there.
It seems to me that they should still be in there.
If that's the board's wishes, then I'm fine.
Yeah, John?
While I'd like to see the special permit condition mentioned, it's primarily as a reminder. The fact of the matter, I believe, is they're not going to get an occupancy permit until that work's been done.
The, the planning board has to sign off on the occupancy before the building's protected, sign off on it?
That one could come out of there. I, I agree that not addressing a ticket tax in here because it, they can't start, they can start selling tickets, but they can't start letting people come in until after they get their occupancy permit. I don't think we should rule out a ticket tax.
I'm not saying you should either.
Or let anybody think we might.
I'm not saying you should either.
But as to simply identifying fees that they need to pay between now and when they get the occupancy permit, that probably doesn't fit in there, in this current agreement. The police detail question, I'm a little bit, a little bit concerned about, in that it's, it's not something that's going to get going until after the occupancy permit is, but we need to be ready.
No, that's not true. It's for the-
No, police details for the reconstruction of the intersection.
Intersection.
There's two police details. There's one for the reconstruction of the intersection, and then details as warranted by the chief of police for the performances that'll occur once they begin.
And that's what I thought we were-
No, this was specifically to the intersection, is what you asked.
I think it's just part of the intersection project. And whatever details the contractor is required to have, they're going to have to be paid for, and they'll be billed to the contractor.
Absolutely.
So the issue is really between the contractor and Indian Hill.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why don't we start with the last part first? So for the ticket tax, if we could ask the chair to put an agenda item on, to bring Indian Hill in, as you discussed, to have a discussion about this, I would like to see us have the discussion and then add it as an article for the spring town meeting warrant and bring it before the town meeting voters. I was privy to some of the email conversations that Mark was having with Town Council, as I'm the one who brought the idea of the ticket tax up. I think that it has to go to the legislature, is that correct, Mark?
Yes, it would have to be a special act.
It has to be a special act of the legislature to allow the ticket tax to be implemented. And again, we're not asking Indian Hill, or at least I wouldn't be proposing that Indian Hill pay any additional amount of money to us, other than putting a surcharge on whatever their performance was. So if it's going to be $25, whatever ticket tax, if any, that the town adopts gets added to that ticket. So I'd like to bring them in, and I'd like to see it for this spring town meeting, so it's not a last-minute situation right before they open. And concerning the other issues, I think if you reference, they wanted to know, Indian Hill, what all the charges would be associated between now and the end of the project, and unless they add something to the project, certainly this intersection reconstruction is something that they've committed to. However, the police details, to my knowledge, is associated with that, were not addressed by the planning board as part of the special permit, just the cost of the construction of the intersection. And so there's no ambiguity in it, that if we reference that the Indian Hill must comply with all planning board provisions of the special permit, and that any required police details will be borne by Indian Hill, within the memorandum, I'd be comfortable. Other than that, I think it's fine the way it is.
Barry, do you have any thoughts to add? Off of me?
I agree that, I agree that we should put it on a future agenda, discuss the, the realities and possibility of some type of ticket surcharge that could be payable to the town to help soften the impact of the, the roads and other infrastructure challenges that are, that are just reality as part of a situation like this.
Okay. And do you have thoughts as to whether the intersection reconstruction and the police details should be included in this memorandum of agreement?
I, I try very hard not to play in the domain of our peer boards. I like to separate powers, as the Massachusetts Constitution has separated those powers. There's clear distinction between what's under the purview of the board's selectmen and what's under the purview of the planning board, and I would hate to create a conflict wherein the planning board, we, because we dabbled in planning board world, there's a wiggle room to get out and, and show that there's, there's cross-talk coming from two different policy or, or authorities within the town. My personal preference is stay away from that and let the planning board's authority and rules play out. The reality is, is you can't do the construction without a police detail, and that has to be borne by the construction of that, you know, that's part of the construction project. The town simply won't provide a police detail if it's not paid for, and, and we're not going to pay for it, right? And that could be, that is, that is where we could help enforce that rule. We just could tell the chief, you're not putting, you're not putting a police detail there for, there unless it's paid for by the, by the construction company.
Okay.
So I think that's handled very tactically, without the need to have to have it expressly written that, of course, they're responsible for it. I don't, I, I think it's obvious. I think that nobody would create a street construction project without understanding that with details, the state of Massachusetts required by law, they don't allow, I don't think that, I don't think we allow signalmen yet.
No.
So, you know, I just, I think it goes along with that package. I'd just rather stay out of the planning board's world.
Okay. Josh, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Barry, I agree with you concerning the separation of jurisdictions between our peer boards, no question about it. But including in the memorandum, referencing the special permit as granted by the Groton Planning Board, and that as a condition of that special permit, that any required details be provided by the applicant, is not something that the planning board can impose upon the applicant. The board of selectmen can impose that because the selectmen are in charge of the roads. Therefore, that's why I would like to see it included within the memorandum.
I agree with what Josh just said. While clearly the planning board is a separate entity from the Select Board, I believe the purpose of this memorandum in Indian Hill's, from Indian Hill's point of view, was to clarify, are we going to be hit with any other fees that we don't know about? And I think it behooves all of us to make it, to remind them that there are some fees that they're going to be hit with.
So if we said in conjunction with, as Josh said, the planning board's special permit-
Right.
-police details will, shall be borne by Indian Hill, period.
Simple as that.
Yeah. I, I get you. I see your point. Makes sense.
Go ahead, John.
I'm on this question of the signage fee.
Yeah.
It, as I read it, it looks like the most, the greatest amount they could be required to pay based, would be $100.
And that's what we're going to clarify it to.
And we should clarify it.
Yeah, it's going to say maximum amount, $100, depending on the sign. I agree, that, that was very confusing. I agree with that 100%. All right.
So I agree with what I'm hearing, and I think it makes sense to have the ticket fee for a future discussion before we have that discussion, Mark? If you can outline for us what the process is, it sounded like there's a town meeting component, there's a legislature component.
Yep.
If we can really be educated and understand that before Indian Hill comes in to talk about it, that would be beneficial.
It's very simple. I can do it right now, very simply. If you want me to, you want me to do it in a future time?
I want it in writing.
Put it in writing, Mark. It's really simple. He is correct.
Yeah.
It might be a paragraph, if that.
A sentence.
And it won't take long. I love it. All righty. Do you need a vote on, on this mark?
Nope. I'm going to bring back the final, I just need a clarification from you tonight on those issues.
All right.
I'll bring it back.
Great, thank you.
Just make myself a note here. Next item on the agenda, John had drafted a capital definition policy for the board's review and approval. It is on page, page six of your packet. Basically, capital items, both tangible and intangible, defined as future projects, programs, improvements, and acquisitions, having an estimated useful life of at least three years, and initial cost of at least $25,000. Examples of capital items include, but are not limited to, land, including parks, athletic fields, cemeteries, municipal buildings, and building improvements, vehicles, machinery, equipment, computer hardware and software, communication systems, two-way radio systems, digital communication networks, antennas, et cetera, infrastructure to the roads, and other items. I think there's a very good definition. As a matter of fact, if the board votes this tonight, when I provide the capital budget to you this year, this will be part of the presentation. So I'd ask the board to consider adopting this definition this evening.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, Becky? This is an excellent beginning. Back when, when we were considering a capital planning committee, which I think we still are in the middle of considering-
You are.
-somewhere or another, I think it may make sense to make a second category of major At least in, in my vision of what a capital planning committee would be focusing on, it would, it would be focusing on the larger projects, not necessarily the, the vehicle replacement, which is an ongoing, fairly predictable- which is an ongoing, fairly predictable capital expense every year. So this, you know, th- this is a good definition. When we get to, we're considering a capital planning committee, we might want to make a second category of capital and, you know, major capital being everything over a hundred thousand or something like that. Just to, to, to get a-
As part of the charge?
As part of the charge, because I think what it, what, at least in my opinion, and what I'm looking for is more citizen involvement and more discussion and more thoughtful thinking about very large construction and renovation projects. I think everyone understands that we have to replace our, our police cruisers and, you know, dump trucks and plows and, and fire equipment on a fairly regular basis and that the professionals who run those departments are pretty good at figuring that out.
Other discussion, thoughts? Yeah, John?
The, the consideration of minor capital, at least as I observed it during the budgeting process here a couple of weeks ago now, is that it's anything under twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't particularly think that if we're going to have a capital planning, a capital planning committee or we want to try and, and manage our capital needs so there aren't surprises, that something as big as a hundred thousand dollars could make a significant difference in the plan for an expenditure on an annual year and that they should be looking at that. The things that Becky was talking about, many of them will fall under the twenty-five thousand dollar or under the three-year requirement and that's not an either or. It's both you have to have over three years and over twenty-five thousand dollars. Certainly, we can consider it as we move along. But I think this is probably where we ought to get started from.
Other thoughts? All right. So does anyone want to make a motion that we adopt this definition or policy currently?
I move that we adopt the proposed policy as written draft to two thousand and eighteen eleven twenty-seven. I'm sorry, seventeen, twenty-seven.
Second.
Seventeen, seventeen, seventeen.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor with cap, with the roll call?
Oh, pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguean, aye.
Geiger, aye.
Peas?
Peas, aye.
Thank you.
At last week's meeting, the select board asked me to contact town council, seek his opinion on the town's liability relative to plowing sidewalks. Specifically, the board wanted to know if the town had any liability if we did not plow sidewalks in subdivisions even though the regulations required them. Town council and I have been going back and forth in emails for the last five days with questions and answers and further research. So at this point, I don't have a definitive answer for you on, on whether or not we do. But what I do know is how other towns in the area have, have been handling the sidewalks and, and the way that they've been doing, the way the town of Groton has been doing it for, for several years. So the board had adopted a policy back in two thousand and eight on sidewalks that we discovered this happened before I became town manager. That's why I wasn't familiar with it. But Dawn was able to dig it up. It's recognized by the board of selectmen that for public safety reasons, certain sidewalks located in the public way must be cleared from time to time of snow and ice. It's understood that the town will not be responsible for clearing all sidewalks. And to the extent that reasonable property owners should clean snow and ice from the sidewalks located in front of their homes and business, it's important for citizens to work with the town to maintain free and easy access to hydrants. How that got thrown in on the sidewalk discussion, I don't know, but it did. The board accepts and adopts the, a map detailing what sidewalks are to be cleared and what sidewalks aren't. I think I put that map in here. Did we?
It is.
Mm-hmm.
That's here.
Here it is, right here. I had talked to a couple of you, a couple of board members and they thought that with this map, it's a little confusing because as new sidewalks get put into town, if we don't update the map, it's, it's very confusing. So the thought was that we update this map to only include what sidewalks we do plow, which would be that blue. And I think that's a very good point, so I will do that. Further, we went and we reached out, thanks to Dawn. I, I don't know how she did this so fast, but I, I sent her an email asking her to contact various towns and within five minutes I had all this information. So thank you, Dawn. I don't know what I'd do without you. Pepperell, there's no policy on sidewalks. Air, this is from their, their policies, the DPW clears snow and ice from sidewalks on major pedestrian routes. Clearing snow and ice from sidewalks is the prop- property owner's responsibility. So it's pretty similar to what we do here in Groton. Brookline.
Mass or?
Brookline, Mass. Brookline, Mass is unbelievable.
I don't know if there are sidewalks in Brookline, New Hampshire.
I should have been clear and said Brookline, Mass. Brookline, Mass, I got to tell you, this is, this is why I'm having an argument with town council over liability issues because they fine you if you don't clear a sidewalk.
So does the city of Boston.
Yeah, so-
The city, I mean.
Yeah, well, it's a town. Brookline's a town. But I thought that was very, I thought that was very interesting. But Brookline is very specific on how wide it has to be and, and, and everything else under the sun. Littleton has no policy. Townsend has no policy. Westford specifically says, we do not clear sidewalks. So our current policy says that the town maintains sidewalks in the town center area and the west Groton area. These are cleared as soon as time permits after the roads are plowed. So basically, what I would like the board to do is add the following wording to our policy that says, clearing snow and ice from other sidewalks is a property owner's responsibility. Please assist us with clearing sidewalks in a timely manner. That's my recommendation to the board. I'd ask the board to adopt that this evening.
Yeah, all right, Josh.
I think it's a great recommendation. I'd like to wait to see what our liability is in town council before taking that position then.
Yeah, John?
I, I think we also have to look at, right now, I believe we are clearing one subdivision.
Right.
And if we're not going to clear subdivisions, it's perhaps unfair to subdivisions that we don't clear, that somebody has one that we do clear. And I understand that it, we got into the business of clearing it because it had something to do with the way traffic was avoiding other ways to get over towards air.
Correct.
And if that risk has been mitigated through other activities and so forth, I think we have to look at fairness to all and probably remove that subdevelopment from the list of places we clear.
Yeah, Becky?
Yeah, I was going to bring up that too. And Mark, could you just pull the map-
Back to the map?
The map up.
Yep.
Just to be clear, the, the, I believe the Riverbend subdivision is those curly roads there.
This here?
Yeah.
This section right here?
Yeah, and I don't, I, he said they started doing it because it was becoming a commuter cut-through, but I don't, I feel, I cannot understand how that could be. I don't see who's cutting through where.
People would go down Mill Street, they'd take a, if they were coming down one nineteen, heading up towards the center of Groton, head up Mill Street, take a right-hand turn, I believe it's Jenkins Road.
That is Jenkins Road, yep.
And then take a left-hand turn into the subdivision, then run through the subdivision roads and come back out on two twenty-five. Thus bypassing the center of town.
Well, that seems, yeah. But I, I, I think that we do have a problem of, if we say we're, if the policy says we clear sidewalks in the center of town in west Groton, that doesn't fit. The other thing I was, now if you go back to the wording, I'm sorry.
Sure, yep.
I actually, when you told us that there was this snow policy on the website, I read through it. I'd never seen it before. And it's quite long and it goes on and it includes a whole lot of information that has nothing to do with snow. So part of my comment here is we ought to separate that out and find some way to publicize it. But it includes the fact that in many cases, you do not own the property that goes all the way to the road in front of your house. So the wording that says, clearing snow and ice from other sidewalks is the property owner's responsibility, that isn't actually going to serve us because I believe the town owns the sidewalk in a lot of those places.
Right.
So we want you to clear the sidewalk that is in front of your house.
Oh, okay. All right, good point.
It's because the owner is the town, as is spelled out more clearly in the, you know, in that lengthy snow policy. And I was happy to see that because it came up in discussion earlier this year about the placement of political signs and where does people's, where does your land end and things like that.
So if we, if we go for the notion of the sidewalks that are but your property.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was going to do.
I think that hits.
That addresses Becky's point. That's a good point, Becky. Thank you.
Very good point, I think.
Yep.
All right, so I will bring this back, if, if, unless there's other comments, I will bring this back, clear it up, once I get town council's opinion?
Yep. The only comment I would throw out, and it's not specifically about this, is that this kind of experience highlights the need to have all our policies somewhere in one place so that we're all aware of them and can find them.
And with somehow a, maybe a search function that actually finds things?
Well, this is a good point to bring up something that I was going to bring up later in my town manager's report. As you know, next Monday night, or maybe you don't know, I'm going to tell you now, so this will be the first time you heard it. Next Monday night, on the agenda, Mike Chason will be coming in to roll out the new website. In talking to a few of you this past week, you thought it would be a great idea to see it in advance of the meeting so that you have a chance to play with it, so when Mike comes in to present it to the public, that you, you can provide better feedback to him. And I agree with that. I thought that was a great suggestion. I spoke to Mike. Mike was planning after he announced to the board on a suggestion by select board member Geiger to pick five or ten residents in this town and send that out to them as well, which he's going to do. But tomorrow morning, you are all going to get an email link from the IT director, the five board members of the new website. And he's going to ask you to have at it for five or six days. And when he brings, comes in next Monday night, hopefully you will have had a chance to go through it, offer him feedback and then he'll roll it out to the public. I think you're going to be happy. Then again, I'm always the eternal optimist when it comes to these things. So I think you're going to be happy. Yes, Barry?
May I recommend that in advance of bombing the IT director and, and a meeting with all of the things and opinions, sometimes websites can be complicated and there are, there are technical reasons, certain things may be done a certain way. If there's an issue or you don't understand something, send that an email in advance maybe, rather than holding it all up for a meeting. Because some things may need to be researched, whether they can or can't be done, some things may, you know. And, and, and certainly we should bring them all up at the meeting, but at least that way, in a, with a technical situation like this, it's, it's sometimes a good idea to give some guidance to be able to respond effectively to those questions rather than saying, I'll have to get back to you on that.
I, I, I agree with that. That's, that's, I agree with Barry a hundred percent. But I want to give you five days, six days before the meeting to get it. So I'm glad you mentioned the, the website because I was going to bring that up later in the meeting. So I'll bring that back. Moving ahead to item number six, it's time for your annual licenses. If you go to page eight in your packet, but I'll put it up on the board and what I'd like to do is read into the record the licenses.
Is page eight the most current? I know that there were a couple of little tweaks and revisions.
This is the updated version. Dawn put her updated version in the, in the packet that you have. So don't look there, look up on the screen. Although it should be on the lower.
It's down like a-
It's on, it's on your group dots.
But it isn't on mine. I have another place to look. That's okay.
What, what was changed?
There's a couple of-
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation. So what I would like to do is I'll read these into the record and ask the board to, to vote them page by page as we normally do. So Amahy Realty LLC doing business as the Boston Road Market. Playish Patel Manager located eight seven one Boston Road for a package store. All alcohol CBL license, hours of operations Monday to Saturday, eight AM to eleven PM, Sunday ten AM to eleven PM. License to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Can we just interject, Mark, that CBL is the common vic?
Common vicular license, yes. I'm sorry.
That, no.
Groton Marketing Inc., John Madigan Manager located two thirty-five Main Street for a package store, all alcohol license. Hours of operation Monday to Saturday, nine to nine, Sunday eleven to six. Marshan, Dennis Marshan, Dennis and Estelle Marshan doing business as Craven's Package Store. Dennis Marshan Manager located seventy-seven Boston, seven seventy-seven Boston Road for a package store, all alcohol license. Hours of operation Monday to Saturday, eight to eleven, Sunday ten to eleven, license to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Filo's Cucina Inc., doing business as Filo's Cucina, Oswaldo Filo Manager located two thirty-five Main Street for a common vic license and a carry-in, bring your own alcohol in license. Hours of operation Monday through Thursday, eleven to eight, Friday and Saturday, eleven to nine, Sunday four to eight. Main Street Inc., Chang Wen Hung Manager located four ninety-five Main Street, unit three C for a common vic license. Hours of operation Sunday to Thursday, eleven thirty to nine thirty, Saturday eleven thirty to ten. Groton House of Pizza, Theo Stefanis Manager located at one twenty-nine Main Street for a CBL and an entertainment license. Hours of operation eleven AM to nine PM. I'd ask the board to adopt those licenses, approve those licenses.
Mark, can you clarify, what does the entertainment license include?
Pinball machine, video, video games.
What did you think it included?
I just thought it might be more interesting to visit there in the near future.
Yes, you can't have one without the board.
Very good. Glad to see we're on top of that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the first page of licenses as presented.
I move that we approve the licenses as presented on the first page as read by the town manager.
And as printed on the first page.
Yep.
Okay. So it's a moved and seconded. We need a roll call vote. All in favor?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguean, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Peas, aye.
Second page, Santini's Restaurant and Dairy Bar doing business as Johnson's Restaurant and Dairy Bar. Richard Santiano Manager located at one sixty-four Boston Road for a CBL and a carry-in license. Hours of operation, summer hours daily six to nine, winter hours Sunday six to three. Gilson Family Herb Enterprises doing business as the Herb Lycian. David Gilson Manager located at three sixty-eight Main Street for a CBL and a carry-in license. Hours of operation daily, ten thirty to eleven. FJ Catalano Enterprises Inc. doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, Groton Center. Steve Catalano Owner located at one thirty-three Main Street for a common vic license. Hours of operation daily five to nine, license to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Courtney's Donuts LLC doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, Groton Forge Village. Steve Catalano Owner located three Forge Village Road for a common vic license. Hours of operation daily five to nine. Courtney's Donuts LLC doing business as Dunkin' Donuts. Groton Hafner, Steve Catalano Owner located at three eighteen Main Street for a CBL. Hours of operations daily five to nine. Groton Towing Inc., Robert Olson Manager located at four fifty-five Main Street for a class-two license. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, eight to six, Saturday nine to twelve, twenty-four seven for towing. Yes, John?
What's a class-two?
That is the ability to sell used vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
That is the only place in Groton that has that?
There was another one down near the Townsend Line.
Yeah, they went out of business, I think.
Yeah, they're like a landscape.
There was, there was another one, yep. Gibbet Hill Grill LLC doing business as Gibbet Hill Grill and Restaurant and the Barn at Gibbet Hill. Function Hall, Martha Lucio Manager located at sixty-one Lowell Road for an all-alcohol restaurant license. There were two of those, one for the barn, one for the restaurant, same with the CBL. Hours of operations to the barn and grill Monday through Saturday, eleven to one. Groton Medical Wellness Spa LLC doing business as Evans Energy Wellness Cafe. Gene Norton Evans Manager located at four ninety-three Main Street for a CBL. Hours of operation Monday to Thursday, eight to six, Friday eight to five, Saturday ten to three. I'd ask the board to adopt those licenses.
Lots of hands on this one. John?
If you go back to the Johnson's Restaurant and Dairy Bar.
Yep.
The hours, they have winter hours and they have summer hours.
Yep.
And the winter hours are different than the summer hours, not only on Sunday but on other days of the week. In other words, they're saying here, summer hours is every day, six to nine. Winter hours, just Sunday, six to nine.
Six to three.
Six to three.
I'm sorry, six to three.
Are they only open on Sundays?
No, not during the winter. They have other days that they're open.
Just grant it daily from six to nine.
Yeah, just grant it daily from six to three. Thank you for catching that.
From six to nine?
Yeah. Because if you do it year-round at six to nine, it doesn't matter. Why don't we just do that? They close early, they close early. You're, you're, you're right, Josh, because you're just giving them the extended. Yeah, I agree with that.
So it would be year-round. They're always, they're six to nine.
I should have caught that, John. Thank you for catching that.
Got another one for you.
Okay.
Under Courtney's Donuts, the third one at the three eighteen Main Street location, the hours of operation stipulate five AM to nine PM.
Yep.
But on subsequent page, number four, where they are contained within Energy North Building, which is Hafner's, under Hafner's control, Hafner's hours is six AM until nine or ten PM. So how can you grant a license to open when the main store is not open for an hour? So how can you grant a license to open, when the main store is not open for an hour later?
That's a good question.
It might just give them the ability to open at 5:00 AM, should Hafner's decide to open at 5:00, we have that new bylaw that says...
No, I, I get it, but Hafner's is requesting 6:00.
Right, but, but also, the Dunkin' Donuts kept functioning even when...
No, the whole thing closed.
For a little, I think they were still open.
When, when Grotton Exchange closed down, and before Hafner's opened up, it was closed, but that has nothing to do with this.
No.
All I'm getting at is if you grant the primary building hours of operation from 6:00 AM on...
Why don't we, why don't we grant Hafner's 5:00, they can open at 6:00, it's up to them, but why don't we grant them 5:00, because our bylaw allows for 5:00 o'clock? I think that solves the problem.
Is there any...
Because Dunkin' Donuts...
There's a common entrance there, there isn't a separate.
You're right, that's what I'm saying, I agree with what Josh is saying.
I don't have a problem with that.
Would, yeah, except for there, um...
We could do that, right?
When, when it became the Grotton Exchange, when it was significantly upgraded, I recall that there was some neighborhood concern, and, and therefore, I just wonder if the original hours of operation were set in response to...
Our bylaw, back when that opened, was 6:00 o'clock, we changed our bylaw last year to 5:00, so that's the issue.
Okay.
We allow for 5:00 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm okay.
I'll bring that back, that's a good point Josh.
But I, I'm okay with going to 5:00.
Okay, I'd ask the board to approve that page as presented, with the amendments.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, so I move that we approve the second page too, as read and then as amended of the licenses.
Second?
All right. All in favor, roll call?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguee, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Pete, aye.
Very good.
Seven Hills Pediatric Center, have that up, Seven Hills Pediatric Center, Holly Jarrett Manager located 22 Hillside Ave. for a common vic, 24/7 operation. Masa Inc. doing business as Exstapa Grill and Cantina, Eric Rambilla Manager located 765 Boston Road, restaurant, all alcohol and common vic license, hours of operation Sunday through Thursday 11:00 to 10:00, Friday and Saturday 11:00 to 11:00. Shaw Supermarket Inc. doing business as Shaw Supermarket, number 7627, Michael Beaton Manager located 768 Boston Road for a common vic license, hours of operation Monday to Saturday 7:00 to 10:00, Sunday 7:00 to 9:00. Blackbird Cafe Inc. doing business as Blackbird Cafe, Katie Kenny Manager located at 491 Main Street for a common vic license, hours of operations daily 6:00 to 5:00. Bruno Ferrara doing business as Bruno's Pizzeria, Bruno Ferrara Manager located at 195 Main Street for a common vic license, hours of operation daily 9:30 to 8:30. Country Butcher and Deli Inc., Kenneth DeMers Manager located at 68 Boston Road for a common vic license, hours of operation Monday to Wednesday 10:00 to 6:00, Thursday and Friday 10:00 to 7:00, Saturday 10:00 to 5:00. River Court Residences, Sharon Amadon Manager located at 8 West Main Street for a common vic license, hours of operation 24/7. The Natural Market Inc. doing business as The Natural Market, Joan Reardon Manager located at 148 Main Street for a common vic license, hours of operation Monday to Saturday 9:30 to 6:30, Sunday 11:00 to 5:00. I'd ask the board to approve those licenses.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of your roll call?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguee, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Pete, aye.
Before you go on, you know what I'm gonna say.
I'm, I'm gonna do this page a little bit different, because there are two that I'm gonna take out at the end, and that's the last two on this page, so I'm gonna do the first four, and ask the board to take a position on them. Salt and Light Cafe, Josiah and Linda Coleman Manager located at 159 Main Street for a common vic, don't they have a carry-in too?
They do not, they never apply for one.
They don't, they never apply for one, okay. Hours of operation Monday through Friday 6:00 to 4:00, Saturday 7:00 to 4:00. Energy North Incorporated doing business as Hafner's 3120, Ruth Fitcher Manager located 318 Main Street, these hours of operations will be Monday to Saturday 5:00 to 10:00, Sunday 5:00 to 9:00. 128 Main Street LLC doing business as The Grotton Inn and Forge and Vine Restaurant, Warren Francis Junior Manager located at 128 Main Street for two general on-premise alcohol licenses, two CBLs, and an entertainment license at The Grotton Inn, that would be for more than just pinball, Becky, just in case you were gonna ask that question.
Yeah, but so...
They need an entertainment license to have a band come in and sing, or do anything like that, they need an entertainment license from the board. Hours of operation Monday through Saturday 8:00 to midnight, Sunday 10:00 to midnight, Forge and Vine, hours of operation Monday through Saturday 8:00 to 2:00, Sunday 10:00 to 2:00 at The Grotton Inn, license to expire, of course, next year, and then GPH Pub LLC...
Wait, excuse me, wait, you just read something different for the hours of operation for The Grotton Inn and Forge and Vine?
Yeah, Forge and Vine is gonna be 8:00 to 12:00, and 10:00 to 12:00, and then Grotton Inn 8:00 to 2:00, and 10:00 to 2:00.
But it's different than what's printed.
Which is the correct one?
What he's reading is the correct one, because they can't sell Monday through Saturday before 8:00 AM, and on Sunday before 10:00 AM.
So all their...
So I updated the packet, and I look, it must not have saved, because it's wrong on the screen.
Right, so what I read is, what I read to you is what I want.
Could you repeat it then?
Yep, absolutely, general all alcohol, CBL licenses two, and an entertainment license at The Grotton Inn, the hours of operation Monday through Saturday at Forge and Vine, 8:00 to 12:00, and Sunday 10:00 to 12:00, Monday through Saturday at The Grotton Inn from 8:00 to 2:00, Sunday 10:00 to 2:00.
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, we call the ABCC today to make sure.
You can do a 24-hour-a-day liquor license.
It's not 24 hours a day.
But don't read this, don't read this.
24/7 at The Grotton Inn.
No, 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 I just, I'm telling you, that's wrong, what I'm reading to me is right.
Right, but The Grotton Inn has been advertising that you, you just said 8:00 to 2:00 PM?
Correct, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
Oh, to 2:00 AM.
And then 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, they can't go 24/7.
Ah, okay.
I don't have my glasses on, so I have no idea what's up on that screen right now, on the screen.
That does have a 24, 24 by 7.
Alright, that's wrong.
Okay.
It's 8:00 to 12:00, 10:00 to 12:00 at Forge and Vine, 8:00 to 2:00 AM, 10:00 to 2:00 AM at The Grotton Inn.
And that's what this one, on Dawn sent separately says.
Correct. Then GPH Pub, thank you for catching all this guys, I'm glad you're paying attention, this is, this is really good. GPH Pub LLC doing business as The Grotton Public House Pub and Eatery, Christopher Frothingley Manager located at 94 Lover's Lane, two alcohol licenses, two CBL licenses, daily operation 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. I would ask the board to approve those licenses.
Could you, the, the two, the reason they have two sets of licenses?
Two buildings.
Is because they have the license for the country club?
Function Hall.
Function Hall.
Correct, and the public house.
Okay, so...
How are we, how are we allowing the pub to be open till 1:00 AM?
We, we decided that, I recall, at a, at a public meeting, the neighbors came and, and we...
This board granted it 10 to 1, this isn't new, this is just a repeated lesson.
We did Barry, we had, we had a public discussion about this.
Isn't that outside of the allowable hours?
They can go to 2:00 if they want.
Yeah, we just did 1:00 to 2:00 AM at, at...
At the hotel, so it's different, I thought we, I thought we could only go till midnight.
Nope, you can go to 1:00 AM, you can go to 2:00 AM if you want it.
Gibbet Hill we granted later, right?
Yeah, Gibbet Hill's to 1:00 AM.
And we've got some of the Forge Village to 2:00 AM.
Correct.
I mean The Grotton Inn and Forge and Vine.
Yep.
So, I, I, it's a little bit outside the purview of this discussion, but is that working out to have the people who have the public house also have the, are they the caterers and bartenders?
Yes.
But they're not the managers, weird.
Well, effective January 1st, they are going to pay us a substantial rent to take over booking the events as well.
I see.
So it's really worked out well, they have done a nice job up there, I've got nothing but compliments over the service that they have up there, and the quality of the, of the services, we're actually booking more weddings at the country club than we ever have before, so it's, it's, it's good, things are going well up there.
Okay, so I move we approve those, the first four on this page as read.
I'll second that for discussion, I just have a question under Salt and Light.
Please.
When they periodically, I think they have events there, they'll have open mic night or that kind of thing.
Well, they need an entertainment license if they're gonna do that. Did they take an entertainment license with us in the past?
No, the previous owners had standing entertainment license, but there wasn't a way that they had entertainment.
Alright, we'll look into that, thank you for bringing that to our attention Allison, because you're right, they should.
I know they, I know they did it once, but I think maybe they got a license that time.
A one-day license or a one-night license?
And they get one-day alcohol licenses occasionally, yeah.
We've asked them to consider applying for one.
Does the country pub need an entertainment license if they have a band for a wedding?
No, just asking.
So why, what's...
You're not paying to go into the facility to benefit from the, same thing as Gibbet Hill, we don't charge them with an entertainment license, because you're not paying for the entertainment, you're paying for the...
Food.
There's no cover charge, things like that.
Oh, okay.
All right, so there's a motion on the table to approve the first four on page four, it's been made and seconded, all in favor of your roll call?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguee, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Peas?
Pete, aye.
AL Prime Energy, Mark, I always mess this name up, Chicabadoo Manager located at 619 Main Street for a CBL license, hours of operation Monday through Saturday 5:00 to 10:00, Sunday 6:00 to 9:00, I'd ask the board to approve that license.
So moved.
Pete.
Second, all in favor via roll call?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, no.
Minoguee, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Pete, aye.
Station House Restaurant LLC doing business as The Station House, Andrew McElroy Manager located at 20 Station Avenue for general on-premise all alcohol license, hours of operation Monday through Saturday 8:00 to 12:00, Sunday 10:00 to 12:00. The reason I'm doing this separately is we received a letter, do they have this, did they receive this letter? And I read it into the record, Madam Chair, if it's okay with you?
Yeah.
As the new year approaches, we're looking forward to welcoming all of you when we open our doors in mid-January, an executive chef recently joined the team, and we're actively interviewing sous chefs and managers, needless to say, it's a very exciting time for us, and a fitting occasion to thank all of you who've shared their guidance along the way. We will find and close our liquor license information, for the past two years, we paid the fee for the liquor license, but the license hasn't been issued, because we hadn't received our certificate of occupancy. We've been working to bring careful attention to each detail of the renovation, so this project has taken longer than we expected. That having been said, we want to get every detail just right, so the restaurant can continue serving the community in a way that harmonizes with the character of the town. Given that we'll soon be in a position to receive a certificate of occupancy and a liquor license, we would ask that you prospectively apply those past payments for our liquor license application moving forward. So basically, what they're asking for is a fee waiver of the liquor license fee, which is $3,000, for next year, since they've already paid us $6,000 for licenses in the past that they haven't used, that's the request.
Well, I don't know that we're wavering, I think what we're doing is applying.
Applying, okay, that's another one.
It's not a waiver, they're still paying.
They've already paid.
Right, so we're simply applying, we would simply be applying those against the next two years.
Next year.
One year.
One year, they're only asking for one year.
Okay.
So this is a one-time, one-year?
Yep.
So they're gonna have, still have half, in other words, they've paid, I don't know how much.
They've paid us $6,000 over the last two years.
They paid for two years.
$3,000 and $3,000.
$3,000, and they haven't used it.
So, we're gonna give them credit for $3,000.
Correct.
And they're gonna live with the other $3,000.
Correct, that's the request, and I wanted the board to take that up tonight, I think it's a reasonable request, but in, in, when you approve that license, I want you to specifically vote the fee as well.
Can I ask a question? Why are they not getting a CBL license?
Because they don't have final sign off from the board to help you.
We'll be back with the CBL from them.
I get it.
We will be back with the CBL when they're ready to open.
Did they purchase CBL?
They have not.
They've never gotten a CBL from us before.
Because they've never had...
Because they've never had a restaurant open.
Right.
You need that once the restaurant opens.
Any other discussion or questions?
So I think we have to have two motions, one...
One to approve the license, and then one to apply the fee?
Yes.
That's, I think you're right.
Would you like to make those?
You comfortable with that?
Would you like to make those? Or either of those?
I, I move that we approve the 2019 general on-premise is all alcohol license for the Station House Restaurant, doing business as The Station House.
Second.
Rule call, all in favor?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguee, aye?
Pete, aye.
Very good, and the next motion?
I move that we...
Apply.
Apply the, the general on-premise all alcohol permit fee for 2018 to the 2019.
I'll second that.
License.
Josh?
Under discussion, could you potentially accept a friendly amendment to state that any additional fees that were collected by the town of Grotton, for unused all alcohol permits, will not be applied for future years?
That's fine, with me.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's a, a fair thing to do.
One time?
Once, right, yeah.
So all in favor via roll call?
Pine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Minoguee, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Peas, aye.
So, item number seven, I have a proposal I want the board to consider, so that we're not gonna spend hours here tonight. Allison did an excellent job in Dawn and mine absence to outline what all the goals are. And there are
Many.
Twenty. So what I would like to suggest, this is after conversation with the acting chair tonight, is that tomorrow I send out a list of the goals and have you vote, or not vote, but indicate which ones you want to cover as your goals and limit it to five each. And then whatever the top five are, put on the agenda for the board to debate in a future agenda that those will be your goals for the year. To try to do that now, I think would be very difficult. So that would be my recommendation in talking, and I, I think it's an excellent idea from Allison, and I'd like to implement that. So, can I?
Can you send it out as a Word doc so we can, with a box to check it?
And I'll, I'll work with Dawn, because some of these, it was my error, but some of these should actually be indented. Their kind of parts will be seen under.
Yes, they were submitted earlier.
We'll put it in a, in a, in a Excel spreadsheet.
I like it.
All right. You love Excel spreadsheets!
But wait.
You only want five?
I think five is too small a number, so.
All right, well, five to eight, I, I don't want you to have thirty-seven.
But, but isn't there a way, and this, this is, this is beyond me to figure out, but if we ranked them all in, I don't know.
One through twenty?
One through twenty, or if we grouped them to, I mean, some of them probably are a little bit duplicative. I, I haven't looked carefully with that in mind, but.
Can, can we rank like the, the top eight and then
Then the next set.
We'll get forward, whatever has, say, two people or more have voted for it or something, and I mean, I think some of it will need to be a little fluid, depending on how we respond.
Right.
But let's keep it simple.
Yeah, please.
I agree.
But, yeah, I mean, I, I think five is not really enough.
Okay.
How about seven?
Well, let, let's see where we get after we rank, if we say the
No, I, no.
Choose your top eight and then see where we get from there. We're going to have to discuss it a little bit.
If, if we don't force ourselves to think through them and pick the six, seven, eight, whatever the the board decides on as a number, we will be wrestling with this for months. That's what I'm concerned about. And we need to get the goals identified, so we can get working on them.
Yeah, but if we only select our, each of us our top eight, we don't end up with eight that are the same, and then how do we go beyond that? We have to have ranked more than eight to get to something.
Hmm, no.
Sure, I understand why I should say, and that would have five, each of, each of us, and we did eight, and we wanted eight goals, and each of us had a separate one ranked, okay, that we thought should be included. It's gonna be a problem, so if you rank the top twelve, you'll end up with consensus, and then you can hone it down to seven or eight. We have commonality across.
Right.
And you'll have a couple outliers, but it would be easier to do.
I can take the, I can take the top, if you put one through twelve, I can sort that out, figure out which ones have the lowest totals, and the lowest eight totals across five people would therefore become the top eight.
Or the highest.
The highest.
No, the lowest, because if you rank number one or first.
Oh, oh, I get it, I get it, yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the lowest.
Anything that has a five would become a number one. Anything that has a, you know, an eight, if everybody wrote a certain number one, right? So, I mean, that's how it kinda works. So theoretically, you end up with like a lot of sixes and sevens and eights. And that's usually where you end up in the sweet spot, some tens, some elevens.
Why don't we trust the chair and the town manager to take care of this? And if there are concerns or a specific one that someone feels very strongly about, we can always bring back one item.
Right, I mean, you're, you're gonna try to put together something to present to us, but we're still gonna discuss it.
Oh, absolutely, but, but I wanna give you a list that says, here is what you guys think are the top eight goals, instead of cranking twenty right now. We'll be here and Josh will.
I understand that it would be, we should streamline the process a little bit.
Okay, I will do that. So, I'll try to get that out to you this week, and we'll try to get it on your first, I don't know if I'll have it ready for next Monday, but we'll try to do our best to, to bring it back. In the meantime, if I may just finish?
Yeah.
I need Allison and, and Barry to sit down with me, because the board's policy requires this chair and the vice chair to sit down with the town manager to set the town manager's goals for the next year. So Barry, you and I can talk Wednesday morning and then figure out when we get together with Allison? When you're back?
I'm not available Wednesday morning, Mark, but we'll figure it out, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so we won't talk.
I see, I'm sorry. I am available Wednesday morning. I thought we were gonna try to talk tomorrow.
I can't, whatever you wanna do, I'm, I'm fine with.
Whatever, we'll chat.
Okay, we'll chat.
Before we leave this page, I want you to just take a look at number six. And I want you to, uh, cut out that last vote to approve the designation at fall twenty nineteen town meeting, because I think I am wrong about that needing to happen.
Okay. Um, while we're on that, another announcement.
Yes.
Um, on January, and, and this is probably getting caught on the ongoing issues list, but I'll bring it up now since we're talking about it. January seventh, we are going to schedule a joint meeting with the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Finance Committee, uh, the Light Commission, um.
Wait, wait, I think you're wrong, January fifteenth?
Fifteenth, I'm sorry, thank you. January fifteenth, at seven. Here's where I get my confusion. January fifteenth, at seven.
Martin Luther King Day?
No.
Nope. Follow me.
Okay.
Follow me. Nope, I brought that up. This is Tuesday night, this is an off, off meeting. It's going to be a joint meeting with all the boards and committees uh, that are involved in this, to have Kelly Brown come out and give one explanation for all of you on the, on the Green Communities Program. And that way the board can, that was part of the board's goal, and so we're going to do that. I will send out an email to everybody, uh, over the next day or so.
And what is the date?
It's the fifteenth, Tuesday the fifteenth.
Tuesday, January fifteenth.
And can we arrange to have that recorded, just so that we have it?
Yep, we're gonna do it, we're gonna make sure that Bob Coleman records it, we'll do it in this room here. Uh, and we'll try to have, um, as many people in here as possible for the meeting.
We have a Florence Roach meeting that night?
All right, let me think. We gave, I gave Kelly two dates, the fifteenth or the seventeenth.
I had another date in here, um, I think it was, it's the seventeenth that I have some time held for. No, it can't be the seventeenth, because.
No, the, I wanted to schedule, yeah, I wanted to schedule the, the time on an off week of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, because I wanted the Planning Board to be here, so maybe if you and I have a conflict on the fifteenth, which we do, we will do it on the seventeenth. Okay, I'll, I'll, there will be a joint meeting on either the fifteenth or the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Is the MMA is the eighteenth, Friday. The MMA is Friday.
Yeah.
You don't wanna have a late meeting the night before? Yes, I'm sorry.
I actually was planning to be in there the night.
Okay.
That's fine.
Related to scheduling, do we yet know which Saturday morning the joint budget meeting?
They have not gotten that date to me yet. I hope that on the seventh of January, which is the Monday, when I present the budget to the Select Board and the Finance Committee, that they will have a date for you then. I hope. But I do not have a date yet.
Is there any way to, to, to get that on the calendar sooner than that?
I'll talk to Gary.
Yeah, that would really be nice to know. All right.
Um. I will get back to you as soon as I can on that one. I will contact Gary this week. Um, back to the, uh, town manager's report, before we get into other business, I have something that I, that came up this afternoon that I'm very, very concerned about, that I want to, uh, talk to the board about, uh, and that is our legal bill. In fiscal year, um, two thousand and eighteen, we spent fifty-four thousand dollars on town council. Through the first five months, we changed town council this fiscal year in, in August. So town council was still town council in July. So in August, we switched councils, so in four months, we have spent on legal bills sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. I have a ninety thousand dollar budget. I was concerned about this when I gave the board a spreadsheet on what I thought the cost was gonna be versus what we were paying. The board made a decision. I'm going to tell you, we need to rein this in, or I'm gonna run out of money in February. Uh, as a matter of fact, I'm definitely gonna run out of money in February. So our legal budget is in, in dire straits, and I wanted to, and I apologize if this isn't on the agenda, this just came up this afternoon when Dawn and I were doing the bills, and I wanted to get it to the board as soon as possible. So I need guidance.
Why, why are we out of turn? Is it the labor, the labor, what's the component?
No, the labor has been, the labor has been, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. There was a case that our previous town council was working on, it's going to trial right now, that we had to bring that particular, the new town council up to speed, and we got hit with an eight thousand dollar litigation bill for something that wouldn't have cost us.
This month, that's this month alone.
That's this month alone, and they haven't even gone to trial yet. So, I'm, I'm very, very concerned. Our labor bills have averaged about thirteen hundred bucks a month. Other than what happened in July, that was different. But our labor bills with K and P over the last three months have averaged thirteen to fifteen hundred bucks a month, which, which is what we were paying with the retainer.
Litigation wasn't covered.
So, the litigation is driving, the litigation is driving these through the roof?
No.
Well, no, because the retain is also fifteen hundred dollars higher per month.
Well, but there was, uh, what, eight or nine thousand, um, just for the Select Board.
Well, we got billed to the Select Board, but my understanding was there was a border health case that was about eight thousand.
We pay all the legal.
In a ZVA case, now we pay it. But, but the point being is, is that
That's.
litigation wasn't covered in either Copeland and Page's contract, nor in our new contract.
Yeah, but there's no way that this Johnson bill would have been eight thousand.
Can I please, can I please finish?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
But when this board elected to change council, the, and I'm not defending their bill, but what I'm saying is, is that in order to get new council up to speed with a case that's been going on for multiple years, you can't expect them to, um, absorb all that information without reading it, understanding it, communicating with previous council about what strategies were, and having conversations to understand that. So there's a ramping up cost associated with this. Do I like this bill at this number? God, no, it's horrible. Um, but we need to have a discussion with them, I would think, to say, are you up to speed on this now? And what are the anticipated costs that you believe we will incur to take this through trial? And, and so that way you can get a handle on this, and then we know that we had some one-time, non-recurring charges, and we never know when litigation's gonna happen, no matter who council is. So I think a discussion needs to occur.
Yeah, John?
Well, I would like to see or better understand what's being done for us under the retainer. You know, by the work piece. And the hours.
Do we have it in the bill?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, we do, I looked at it just an hour and a half ago.
That's how they justify the retainer.
Okay, well, maybe you can send that to me.
I will.
Maybe send it to everybody, so we can have a better feel for what we're getting under the retainer uh, versus what we're, we're paying for.
Becky?
Um, I also recall reading at some point on one of these litigation issues that, um, they couldn't find information at KP, and so that may have required more time spent.
Could've, could've.
But.
KP did send them all our files.
I, I just wanted to clarify, litigation is not under the retainer for either KP or Brooks-Durensis.
There is no part of labor that's covered by a retainer.
Litigation.
No, no, there's no part of labor that's covered by any retainer, by either firm. We pay a hundred and ninety dollars an hour to KP for any labor-related issue. If I pick up the phone and have a five-minute conversation, I get billed at the rate of a hundred and ninety dollars an hour. With Brooks-Durensis, if I have a question on a bylaw, or like the sidewalk issue, that type of issue is covered under the retainer. Ask, ask it for an opinion of council.
My question is, litigation.
Is a hundred and ninety dollars an hour.
Is not covered under the retainer for Brooks-Durensis or for KP? Was not for KP either.
Oh, previously.
Yep.
Correct.
Yes, so high litigation fees we were in for either way, um, depending on how, whether they're actually pushing the case forward or not.
We were paying a hundred and seventy dollars an hour for litigation with KP. We are now paying a hundred and ninety dollars an hour for litigation. Last year, we spent fifty-four thousand on legal bill. This year, we're already at sixty-six thousand. That's the concern.
But I think it would also be, um, useful to go back a few years and, um, look at how much of our total expenditure for a given year was in litigation and how much of it was in.
I did that analysis for you, you have that, I did the last two years. When you made the decision, I sent your spreadsheet.
So can you, at this point, Mark, kind of
I can send it to you again.
Update that or summarize things? Um, you know, talk with Brooks and Durensis and see what you can figure out in terms of their anticipated costs and things? And bring this back to us, I mean, it's definitely a good heads up and.
That's right, I, I'm sorry, sorry, I need a gentleman, but this just happened this afternoon.
Yeah, Josh?
Yeah, if possible, I would like the town manager to ask Brooks and Durensis specifically, um, how much money of their bill for the eight thousand dollar portion of the litigation was associated with recreating or regathering the data which Copeland and Page lost?
I have that, I can tell you.
Because I think maybe KMP should reimburse us for that. Because we paid KMP for that data.
I'll go through this, Josh, I'll get that for you.
You know, I mean, fair is fair, we did pay for it once.
Send that out to the board.
Does that make sense? Thank you, Mark.
We'll do it. Um, other business, I'll turn this other business item over to, um, to Josh, but I will ask you to jump ahead in your packets, and I'll put it up on the screen to page, um, fourteen.
All right, so I had asked Mark to put this on the agenda. Uh, this concerns, um, health insurance co-pays and for our retirees. Um, over the last six years, in the course of renegotiating our collective bargaining agreements with the various unions in our town, we have gone over the last two contracts, some eighty percent, uh, by the town and twenty percent to the employer, to, in the previous contract, seventy-five percent to the, um, and, when I'm not talking about school districts, by the way, I'm talking about municipal side. Uh, seventy-five percent to the employees of the unions and twenty, I'm sorry, seventy-five percent by the town and twenty-five percent by the employees. In the current collective bargaining agreements that were negotiated out, as well as in the individual agreements with contractual employees such as the town manager, fire chief, police chief, uh, we have negotiated over the life of the contracts and or collective bargaining agreements down to a seventy percent, uh, town share, thirty percent. So I asked Mark to let us know what, or I asked him first, what are we paying for employee-retiree, uh, co-share payments? And the answer to that was seventy-five, uh, sorry, I apologize on the numbers here, sixty-five percent on the town's portion, thirty-five percent on the employee or retirees' portion. Um, I said, but when's the last time we took a look at this? And to my recollection, we've talked about it, but we've never changed this since I became a Selectman, or now a Select Board member, um, which is twelve-plus years. Um, so, with that said, and due to the renegotiations with our collective bargaining units, I asked Mark to take a look at what are some of the surrounding towns doing, uh, for retiree benefits. So Mark produced what you see up on the wall, and initially it had, uh, some regional school districts in it, and those, Mark filtered out and took them out of the equation. If you remove the Town of Groton out of that number, and you take all of the other twelve towns, uh, and the Case Collaborative included, which I don't even know what the Case Collaborative is.
Yeah, I should've taken that out, that's an education. I should've taken that out.
That should come out as well, but because that is in there right now, if you take those twelve that are in there, not including the Town of Groton, uh, and you add them all together and divide by twelve, you come up with fifty, excuse me, fifty-seven point nine one percent is the average. So, what I'm suggesting this board do is to take input, because I'm sure our retirees, some of which are here tonight, uh, would have concern about paying more for the benefit, but when you look at what the surrounding communities are doing, I think in fairness to our collective bargaining units, which are absorbing, um, more of the cost increases and more of the co-share on a yearly basis, that we need to ask the same of the retirees. Uh, and analogous to, uh, not analogous, but we should reduce the rates similar to what some of our surrounding communities are doing. That's pretty much my pitch here.
Mark, is there a limit?
Fifty, fifty, you can not go below fifty percent.
Other questions, Thomas, Becky?
So, when the sixty-five percent rate that we're paying was set, which presumably precedes anyone at this table, it was significantly lower than what the town was paying for actual employees.
Fifteen percent lower.
Because we were paying eighty, I mean, were we ever paying higher than eighty, do you think?
I think, how, Paul, where were we at, ninety at one point?
Ninety, ten split, that's still honored by GELB.
No, GELB is eighty-seven to fifty. They ju, they just changed it, yeah.
Yeah, because that's been on a little bit of a stick-up for a long time.
We've been eighty-twenty as long as I've been here.
Okay, but so, we were eighty-twenty for our employees, but we were sixty-five, thirty-five for retirees. Um. Yeah, there's something a little bit, uh, difficult to there's, there's, I guess it's, there's a little bit of unfairness, I think, to suddenly change the agreement for people who have been retired for a certain amount of time, and um, all of a sudden we say, well, we're not gonna do that anymore, when in some ways it was promised. I, you know, it's, I think it's worth looking at and thinking about, and I, the footnote that shows up, is there a footnote that's printed below that?
I think that was only relevant when the school districts were in there.
So it was referring to a, but, well, nevertheless, the concept was that it was somewhat phased in for employees hired after a certain date. Um, I think if we're going to contemplate making a change, we might do it that way, uh, so that we don't, we don't change it for people who are currently retired.
If, if, I wanna make one point between our current collective bargaining units and the, and the retirees. I negotiated those changes with our current employees, and we mitigated the impact of a cost share change to our current employees.
Right.
If you change this cost share, tell me you would have to approve it, and there's no way to mitigate the impact of the cost share change, because they are collecting pensions now, and their pensions are their pensions. So if you do this, this will be a definite hit to the retirees that we mitigated with current employees. I think that's an important.
And there wasn't any way to mitigate it.
There's no way to mitigate with the retirees.
And, you know, I mean, big corporations have done this, uh, Polaroid did it, and General Motors did it, and I think they were roundly criticized, and, and people who worked for them felt incredibly betrayed, and I think that as a town, that's really a you know, unless we were in some sort of dire emergency straits, it seems like, uh, not something that we should just jump into. We could, I think, consider phasing it in for our current employees um, to drop it when they retire.
Mark, in terms of kind of the magnitude of cost that we're talking about, what is each five percent adjustment or something, I mean, just ballpark?
Allison, I had those numbers because we, we, we did that. I think for every five percent on retirees, let me, I have that number somewhere, I don't wanna give you that number now. But that we, we did a study that showed that if we changed the town employees' five percent on those plans, what the impact was, and we did a study on retirees, I'll get that for you.
Was it, I mean, just order of magnitude?
It, it was like, uh, a quarter of. It, it was like, uh, a quarter of what the, the, um, what the town employees. I think every five percent was a savings of, I don't wanna put a number out there that I'm not sure of. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I will get that number for you, though.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I agree with most of what, if not all of what Becky's saying. So, unless it were, you know, some tremendously compelling number, I'm not particularly interested in delving into this too far, but other folks?
I'm interested in phasing it in. So, that's a cut-off date. Retirees, after a certain point, there's a, there's a secondary rate.
Okay.
So, current employee, current retirees should be locked in, future retirees. I'll look to see the legality of doing that as well.
Yep.
Well, yes, future retirees, but we, we should give them a few years' advanced notice of when it's gonna change and not just, um, changing.
Right.
Well, there would be some, I, we should think about the unintended consequences of that.
It could, it could encourage some people to retire early. That is an unintended consequence.
Or maybe. Something to be aware of.
And what the impact to our OPEB liability would be if that were to happen, which is significant.
But I think it's, it's triggered on, you know, I'm, I'm not suggesting going to fifty-fifty. I'm not suggesting any number right now. I'm just pointing a, a point of reference. And I think that the concept that you're coming up with is that if your date of hire, at the time of the date of hire, the town was at eighty-twenty, for example, at that point, then you should be able to get what's currently there at sixty-five, thirty-five. However, if your date of hire corresponded when the town was at seventy-five, twenty-five on that payment, then there should be a reduction similar to that. And corresponding when it's seventy-thirty in the current collective bargaining agreement, then the retirement amount would be equal to that in the future. Who knows what the co-share is gonna be in future collective bargaining agreements? But it certainly seems like Lincoln Sudbury dealt with this situation, probably, um, similar to what their co-share was in their town. I don't know the answer to that, or at least their, their district. So, I think looking at that's a fairness issue, and it wouldn't impact any existing retiree. Um, it would only impact future retirees, uh, to the degree of co-share.
All right, so it sounds like, Mark, that there's some more kind of information to get. It's worth looking at, but it, it doesn't sound like there's rampant enthusiasm for impactful change for current retirees.
Correct. Erin, can you grab the microphone, please, for the people at home?
I don't know if it's, uh, means anything, but how many retirees do we have across the board in the town of Groton?
I don't have the number.
Because if there's a heck of a lot less than currently working for you, wouldn't it be normal just to leave it alone? Because there's so less of the current people, it wouldn't really make an impact on anything.
Yeah, I think that's part of what we need to understand. Yep, absolutely. Thank you for coming.
Can we get that number?
I'm gonna get everything, all of that stuff, and that way we can revisit it with all the numbers.
Yep. Um, okay.
Are there any updates on our ongoing?
I have a bunch.
All righty.
If I would like to go, if I would like to go, I would like to go, not if I would like, I would like to go. Uh, senior center building project continues to move well. As I indicated last week, the steel, uh, superstructure is up. I received an update today that we are in the process of putting up the, um, the, um, interior metals and the, uh, outside structure, including the roofing, over the next, uh, three weeks. They are on target for the first week of January to make it winter tight. I'm very excited about the progress moving forward. Uh, the building looks, it's coming to, uh, to light, what it's gonna look like. I'm very, very excited about that. With regards to, um, the Route One-Nineteen sidewalk installation, item number E, end of this week is what I was told. And when I went out there today to take a look at it, I went up and down. I think, I think that is very realistic, that it'll be done by the end of this week. And I know that's something very important to the board. If anything changes, I will let you know, but it looks, the weather is cooperating for them to finish, and it looks like they will be able to, uh, finish it this week as well. Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study. Allison and I attended our first meeting, um, last Tuesday or Wednesday? Tuesday, Wednesday night?
Tuesday, I think.
Yep, um, it's a, we had a very nice introduction. Uh, Fay Rayner was elected chair of the building, uh, committee. Uh, Marlena Gilbert is the vice chair of the committee. We have a definite meeting schedule. Uh, the first step in the process is for us to select a, an owner's project manager. Um, the owner's project manager, there's a subcommittee set up, uh, of myself, Allison, Fay, and Mike Knight is the subcommittee. We will, uh, start the process. We have to go through some training at the state level, and then we will be able to advertise for a, uh, OPM. Once the OPM is selected, the next phase would be to select an architect, uh, to start the feasibility study, which is expected to take some twelve months to complete. Um, they'll be looking at what the, the makeup is gonna be. But the one thing that I learned that I wasn't aware of, and I wanna make very clear to this board, and, and, and I know Allison is aware of it as well, is that the town of Dunstable will not be part of the solution for the Florence Roach Elementary School in terms of contribution. This is a one-hundred percent rotten project for our elementary school in our town. What will affect the outcome of this is whether or not Swallow Union takes back more of the students, grades five and six. And the one concern that the superintendent outlined to us that I thought was very interesting is grade five may make sense at Swallow Union, grade six, because of curriculum, may not. That building may not be able to handle it. But as part of this ongoing study, the school committee and the school, um, um, community needs to make a decision on the, the future of the schools, what their vision is. Visioning is part of this overall study. Some good news is when we first started this process, we thought we were gonna be about forty percent state reimbursement. We are closer to fifty percent state reimbursement on this project. That is really, really good news, and they will continue to refine those numbers as we go through it.
Is that just on this phase of the project?
No.
Across the board?
Across the board.
Through the, to the occupancy?
To the occupancy. That was really good news. I didn't realize that when they, because I was still, I still had forty percent in my head. Um, but you're looking at a sixty to sixty-five million dollar project. We're not talking, I don't wanna put any unrealistic expectations out there. Yes, Josh?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this for a while, and one thought would be to approach Dunstable and say, okay, look, if the town of Groton is building a new Florence Roach school, and we have to fund one-hundred percent of that through the town of Groton, and we will have, when it's completed, a state-of-the-art facility. And if that new facility was able to handle the Groton children that are going to Swallow Union right now, and Swallow Union didn't have any Groton children, A, they have an old school building. Well, Groton has a brand-new state-of-the-art one that's sharing a district and sharing the teachers and the infrastructure cost within the building to staff it. Would it not make sense to take a look at building a bigger school in Groton? That, let me just, just finish before this, because.
I'm sorry, I lost my thought. Yep.
Bigger school in Groton.
So, build a bigger school in Groton, have Dunstable no longer use Swallow Union, which might not be palatable to some of the elementary school parents in Dunstable. However, the offset being that you have a bigger school in Groton that might be able to accommodate both elementary schools in one, thus then having Dunstable participate in the cost of building the building.
State won't allow it.
That's too bad.
That was good, believe me, that was the intent, I think, originally, state should.
Rewrite the law then.
Because, and I think what you told me is it makes for too many kids in one school. Is that correct? They prefer to keep the number down?
That is part of it. That is part of it.
I think, though, that it, it's important per the, per the regional agreement, looking down the road, once we were past the window of, of sharing that enrollment cost, any renovations to Swallow would be one-hundred percent Dunstable's, because the enrollment there would be all Dunstable students.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
So, then fair would be fair, as long as we had our student population that currently occupies Swallow Union absorbed by the new Florence Roach School, assuming that's what it's called. Um, I don't, that's a whole nother story.
Yeah, don't go there right now.
Okay, sorry. The new Florence Roach School, um, that, I just. Will the new Florence Roach School be able to handle the current population that's being handled by Dunstable plus what's in it? That's my question.
The school is going to be, we are approved at six hundred and forty-five students in the new school. There is a potential that it can go fifteen students higher through the process. Um, and right now, I believe the total number of Groton students is five-something. So, this is built for the future of the district.
The five-something includes the population at Swallow.
At Swallow Union, correct.
So, the, the, the future Groton Elementary School would bring back all the Groton students who are currently in Dunstable. And then, my understanding was that MSBA would allow us to tweak those numbers if we wanted to consider either moving pre-K to the elementary or keeping five or five-six at the elementary level. So, those, those numbers are somewhat fluid, depending on how we go.
A lot of, a lot of stu-, this was, we met for an hour, and I got more information that, and I'm sure you felt the same way. It was really.
The best news is the fifty percent.
Yeah, that was, that was really good news. Um, I, I will say that, um, as we, as we go through this process, we'll continue to update us. The one other thing that's going to change, and I don't know if the school committee has done it or not yet, everybody on the building committee is gonna be a voting member. So, both Allison and I will have voting rights on this committee. And I believe the school committee's supposed to take that up soon. I don't know if they have it or not.
Yeah, I believe this week.
Yeah, so, that's another change.
Do you, as town manager, I know you don't have it yet, but will you be able to put together projections for debt scenarios based on a, say, thirty-two million dollar project? Because that's what the cost of Groton would be.
Yep, and I think we need to start doing that.
And I, it would be great to know through the long-term budgeting, um, what kind of impact that's gonna have.
It's gonna be a major impact.
I know that. I mean, it's like our town budget is right now, just to build this. But the point is, what do you spread this out over twenty-two to thirty years?
I think we, we probably, on a, on a, this type of project, talking to our financial advisors, we want to go a minimum of twenty-five years.
I'd love to see what those numbers look like, because anything else that we're gonna consider. In what year would completion of the school bill?
Twenty-twenty-one, I believe, is the construction's supposed to be through twenty-one.
When, when would it start?
I think so.
Yeah, they start construction in twenty.
Was it fiscal twenty-one, or was it?
Fiscal twenty-one. I have to go back a lot.
Wait, start, what, what did you say?
You're gonna be that ready that quick?
No, twenty, no, calendar twenty-one construction would start, occupation calendar twenty-two, fiscal twenty-three.
And when is the first payment due by the, the taxpayers of the town of Groton?
Depends on how we structure the financing. It depends on how we phase it in.
They might ban it initially, so basically.
We wouldn't borrow the entire.
Borrowing would be on occupancy, presumably.
Correct.
So, that would be twenty-twenty-two, which would be fiscal twenty-three. So, by knowing what those numbers would look like, not for this current budget cycle, obviously, because we're here, but certainly for next year's budget cycle, it's real important to know what those numbers are.
Oh, I agree, Josh. I agree. Um, and one, one last update I am very excited to announce, that Friday is my final day as the interim town administrator in Dunstable. I have completed their budget. I worked all weekend on it. Um, and I will be delivering the budget to the selectmen tomorrow night. My final selectman meeting is tomorrow night. I will not be able to attend the fire department, uh, task force meeting. I need to be in Dunstable one last night. Um, but I completed everything I wanted to complete for them. We got back the, uh, information on the, uh, selected candidate for the town administrator. Background came back great, so the selectmen will start negotiating a contract with him. I assume that's gonna be done, uh, relatively quickly. And I wanna thank this board for your support of me in that, uh, process. I feel like I really did a good thing for the town of Dunstable. I, um, I helped them through it, through a little bit of time, and, and I don't think we suffered here in Groton at all. So, thank you for your support, and I'm very happy to say that Friday is my last day in Dunstable. Unless there are phone calls, I, I may have to attend the committee meeting, but that'll not be paid. It'll be on my own, own time. So, anyway, I'm very happy.
Very good.
That's all I have, Allison. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm, now I'm working full boat, boat on Groton's budget, obviously, and I intend to do our budget electronically, unless somebody wants it hard copy. I would rather do them all electronically. I hope the board agrees with that. Everything we do now has been electronic. Unless you guys want a hard copy, you will get it electronically.
Well, we can see how that, I mean, we could request a hard copy down the line if we need it.
If you need it.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Allison. I'm sorry. That's all I have.
Are there any liaison reports? Um, I'll just do one quick update then from the Economic Development Committee, that there are currently two vacancies on that board. So, if there are folks in this room or out and about who are interested in, uh, joining in those important conversations, uh, we would love to see you come to a few meetings and hop on board. Uh, our next meeting, I believe, is in January.
Well, we're not meeting next Monday night?
No, 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 for, for the EDC.
Oh.
We're meeting next Monday night.
Yes, we are, is the sixteenth of January, and it will be in this room, I believe, at six P M. Anything else?
You're already in minutes.
All right, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.